All right, thank you. We're ready to start the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Everybody ready to start? Terrific. All right. All right, I guess the first thing I'm gonna do is call on myself to see if there's a consent agenda, and there is not. So we'll start with that. Second, can we have a motion for executive session, Mr. Newly Appointed Vice Mayor? There we go.
Yes, Mayor. In accordance with a properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the City Council pursuant to Arizona revised statutes, section 38-431.02.A, meet an executive session on Tuesday, February 17th, 2015, at 1:00 PM in the East Conference Room, 12th floor of the Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona, and on Tuesday, February 24th, 2015, at 1:00 PM in the East Conference Room, 12th floor of the Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Poe, say nay. I appear to have it due to have it sorted. Very nicely done, Bill. I didn't know you had it in you. That was very good.
It's been.
Sure, well, I know. So we're gonna have council information and follow-up requests. Does anybody on the council have anything to say? We'll start with Councilman Valenzuela. You don't have to say anything, but if you'd like to.
Sir?
You don't have to say anything, but if you'd like to.
Oh, I will, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I have just a couple of thank yous to go around, as we'll probably get many around the Super Bowl and all the events, and all of them are absolutely justified. We're grateful to the NFL Foundation for the Super Bowl Legacy Grant and the amount of $20,000 for our Fit Phoenix Energy Zones program. This program provides free after-school nutrition and fitness education to middle-aged school students. And John Brodsky, who is the Fit Phoenix Coordinator, deserves a lot of credit here, as well as Jim Burke. This is part of the Parks Department, and it's just, you know, what a great honor to have the Super Bowl Host Committee recognize this particular program that encourages people to live healthier, safer lives right here in Phoenix. I also want to say thank you to our Public Works Department. We are all learning that, you know, I mean, for those of us who spent lots of time here, Phoenix was kept beautiful. It was very clean during all of the events. Lots and lots of opportunities for people to recycle. People were being encouraged to recycle, and it's because of programs like Reimagine Phoenix and, of course, our Public Works Department. We received, or achieved, excuse me, the City of Phoenix achieved a 73% waste diversion during the Super Bowl activities, the Verizon Super Bowl activities here in downtown Phoenix. Consider just how many people were downtown. Consider, you know, light rail breaking records. I mean, there are so many people down here. 73% is such a high number, and our Public Works Department deserves a great deal of credit. And John Trahill, who actually is here, thank you very much, sir, for leading that charge and getting us all to reimagine Phoenix. I want to encourage people to shop 19th Avenue. If you've been down 19th Avenue, light rail is on the final stretch. We're all so excited about that. The 3.2-mile stretch going from Bethany Home Road to Dunlap, you know, crews continue to work very hard, and it's a very dynamic scene. If you go out there, the cones are being moved, and, you know, it's, people are no longer, throughout this entire process, it just wasn't the case of, you know, closing down roads or streets for the sake of closing down roads and streets. As soon as they can get them open, they were getting them opened, and there was a lot of movement there, a lot of safety there, but a lot of access provided to keep the businesses of 19th Avenue, giving them the best access, or their customers the best access. We have worked closely with Valley Metro on shot 19th Avenue programs, shot 19th Avenue. You may have seen a rap on light rail, just using lots of those best practices. Albert Santana deserves a lot of credit, who was our light rail manager. Over the weekend, the Open Door Fellowship, which is a church, Pastor Sam Hill, this church is right off of 19th Avenue. This is the second year in a row that they have hosted Love Our Community, Love Our Community event focused on small businesses, focused on this excitement around having light rail, of course, the City of Phoenix playing, you know, playing a role as a partner there, and just the work that was done, you know, everyone from high school bands to, of course, the local businesses that were in the area coming out. It's just a great activity. It's great to see all of the families and several generations there for that event. Tonight, we will be having a Royal Palm Neighborhood Meeting. This meeting will be hosted by, with myself and Councilman Gates. You may remember that the two offices, District 3 and District 5, were divided technically by 15th Avenue, but the Royal Palm Neighborhood goes, you know, east and west of it, so we do a good job, both of our offices have done a good job of working together. So tonight, both myself and Councilman Gates will be there, along with Commander Rogero from the Desert Horizon Precinct, as well as Jim Burke, our Director of Parks and Recreation, to discuss some neighborhood concerns that are in the area and that have taken place in this park. It's just a beautiful park, and we just have to do our diligence to be sure that it's safe for the families that enjoy it. Lastly, I want to invite everyone to the District 5 website, phoenix.gov/district5. I want to hear from you. I'm hoping people will log onto this website. There is a feature that will jump out at you. You wouldn't have to look very long before you find it, but this allows you to tell us what you think. You know, what are your priorities for District 5? What are your priorities for the City of Phoenix? Those are the things that will be tallied. We want to hear from you, and, you know, it's much like the budget process and My Plan Phoenix and on and on, but just as we, again, you know, we are still starting this year, and we're all so excited about what we want to do moving forward. It's important to, it's important at every turn to ask the public, to gauge the public, you know, what would you like to be, or what would you like to see in your neighborhood in District 5? And of course, Phoenix, I've said this many, many times, so much so that some of my colleagues kind of poke fun every now and again, but public input is not a box that simply gets checked. It should ever be, it should never be treated as a box that simply gets checked. We should, and we must govern based on public input, and it's just that, this is a form of that. So, so far, we have had people who've already taken advantage of that feature, and we did encourage you to do more. Again, phoenix.gov/district5, or you can always call the office at 602-262-7446. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Other members of the council. Councilman Pastore.
So I am going to highlight some of the activities we did this weekend. My staff and I attended the Medlock Neighborhood Cleanup, North and Canal Annual Groundhog Potluck, the Willow Home Tour, and I am very thankful and grateful for all the servant leaders within our community that give to our community, and I'm very happy that they do this out of their heart. I also want to thank Susan Edwards, who, along with many others, who has worked on building neighborhoods connect from the ground up, and they will be hosting a summit at Grand Canyon University Saturday, February 21st at 10:00 AM, and this is where we're bringing all neighborhoods to discuss what's happening within the community, but also connecting neighborhoods and using our best practices within our community. And finally, this Friday at noon, District 4 will be attending the Golden Gate Neighborhood's Annual Community Luncheon, and that is located on 39th Avenue, well, 1625 North 39th Avenue. So please attend if you live on the west side or anywhere in District 4 to the Golden Gate Luncheon. It's gonna be exciting, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Council. Councilwoman Ames.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the ASU Archaeology Department. They operate the Deer Valley Rock Art Museum. We celebrated their 20th anniversary last Saturday, and they are changing the name to the Deer Valley Archaeology Petroglyph Site, and will have a sign on I-17. I also want to thank the Transit Valley Metro and the Outdoor Fellowship Church. The shop on 19th was a wonderful event, large attendance, and I really want the businesses to know how much we appreciate them hanging in there and continue to move forward. Also, we had, I want to remind everyone that Washington School District has a contest going, whether it's a school, or a business, or an organization within their area. They are trying to raise 75,000 pounds of canned goods for the food bank, and that contest is going on, and I encourage anyone in that area to contribute to the nearest school. And last but not least, we kicked off Chinese Week. It is the Year of the Ram, and we have two sister cities, one in Chengdu, China, and one in Taipei, Taiwan, and they are having a celebration Saturday at the Margaret T. Hatz Park. Everyone's invited to come. There'll be food, entertainment, and it's always a great event, so I encourage everyone to get involved. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Former Vice Mayor Gates.
Thank you, current Vice Mayor Jim Waring. I would just echo the comments of Councilman Valenzuela. Just an incredible effort during the Super Bowl. Want to thank all the volunteers of the Host Committee, all the city employees for everything they did. I actually came down here Saturday night of Super Bowl Central, and if you didn't have an opportunity to come down here, it was absolutely incredible, unbelievable. It was sort of like all these years of all this work coming together, that we had our own little Times Squares, and I see David Kreider out in the, in the audience. Thank you, David, and everybody with DPI for all your great efforts. A lot going on in February. Super Bowl's over, now we move on to all this other stuff. This Thursday, February 12th, we'll have our monthly coffee chat at one of my favorite places in District 3, the Oink Cafe. If you haven't been there, great breakfast joint. It's right next to the Target at PV Mall. We'll be there from 7:30 to 8:30, and our guests will be Ken Vender Shore with the Phoenix Parks Department to update us on the latest in our parks and preserves, and also Dawn Trapp with the Civitan Foundation, which is located right around the corner there in the PV Mall area. They do incredible stuff in our community, so hope you can join us for that. Also, we have a couple Coffee with the Cops coming up in our area. First of all, on February 18th, the Desert Horizon Coffee with the Cop from 8:00 to 9:00 AM will be at the Coco's Bakery, so hopefully, again, with the PV Mall theme we're going with this month. I hope you can join us for that, and also that same day, the Black Mountain Precinct Coffee Chat will be at Times Square Restaurant at 7:18 East Union Hills. And again, we have our big North 32nd Bike Ride and Festivities coming up Saturday, March 21st, from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. We're gonna have community booths, just recently had a meeting with some of the members of the community, getting that all together, but the bike ride will be at 9:00 AM. All my colleagues are invited. They want to go out and ride their bikes, March 21st at 9:00 AM, going up and down 32nd Street. And finally, I'd like to put in a plug for our website as well, phoenix.gov/district3. We always have a lot of activities on there and pictures, as well as Facebook. They wouldn't let me have Bill Gates, because there's some other guy named Bill Gates, so my Facebook page is actually William Gates, and I'm also on, I'm also on Twitter at Bill Gates AZ. Thank you.
Thank you very much, William Gates. Council.
Councilman Noakowski and I have the pleasure of co-chairing the Phoenix Anti-Graffiti Task Force, and on behalf of both of us, I want to wish you a happy graffiti-free Phoenix Month. So we want to encourage all of our colleagues sometime during the month of February to get on their social media accounts, including facebook.com backslash William Gates, and to remind people of the important work the city is doing to wipe out graffiti, let people know how to report it, and that we wipe out 80,000 sites per year and are very much motivated to do more, including working with our partner jurisdictions. I had a great meeting with Supervisor Gallardo about what we can do on graffiti in some of the county islands within District 8 and District 7, and we're glad to have the partnership with the supervisor's office on that, and many other issues, perhaps most notably flood control. We also join with Supervisor Gallardo and Councilman Noakowski in representing the Levine area, which was very busy this weekend, and I want to congratulate the citizens there for a record-breaking Levine barbecue and an excellent parade, and was glad to have the mayor out there as well to enjoy some of our great barbecue. In case the microphone didn't pick it up, best barbecue in town.
That is correct, yes. Both under my breath and in the microphone, of course, yes.
So very glad to have all the community leaders step up and make that a series of great community events. We have more great community events coming up. I'm very excited about Chinese Week, and also I have the pleasure of serving as the Sister City Liaison with Ramat Gan in Israel. Their delegation will be visiting us around the Earth Day week, and it will be great to have them for the gala for Sister Cities. On some more community-oriented notes, we have an FAA meeting tonight at 7th Avenue and Buckeye for residents who are interested in airport noise issues and continue to talk regularly with folks about how we can move forward on that issue and giving them some relief. We are also looking forward to Stand Down coming up and helping stand up for our veterans who have done so much for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Noakowski, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd just like to thank everyone who went out to the Levine Parade. We had Councilwoman Gallegos out there, and also our congressman wearing a cowboy hat. I thought he was gonna ride a horse in the parade, but he ended up walking. It turned out to be a great, great event, and thank you for all that support for those individuals out there in Levine. The barbecue was great. Also, the graffiti free in February. You can participate by getting free paint from our graffiti busters. You can call either of, any one of our offices up here, but what we're trying to do is we're just making Phoenix graffiti free. We're asking those community organizations, groups, youth groups, or any organization that's out there painting graffiti, to actually hashtag graffiti-free Phoenix or I love Phoenix and post those pictures on the hashtags. So I think it's so important that we start to communicate and work together to make Phoenix a graffiti-free area. Also, we like to invite everybody out to our next big event out there in the Levine area, where we're gathering individuals to talk about the needs of, and we're gonna be doing a grand opening of a dog park next month that Councilwoman Gallegos was very instrumental in getting out there in Caesar Chavez Park, and also celebrating the month of Caesar Chavez, March 31st is holiday, so thank you for making that possible. And today, the mayor and myself, we're out at the funeral services for Megan, and our prayers go out to her husband, Pat, and all those firefighters, our Fire Department 911 pastors, that really, it's a hard time, and just to hear the stories and see how close of a family the 911 operators are with the Fire Department. It's just, it was just a really sad ceremony, but at the same time, it talks about how we, as the City of Phoenix, are one family, and we take care of each other, and I just really want to thank all those individuals for their support out there for her family and her children, and thank you for showing, showing support. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Azizia.
Thank you, Mayor, and I hope everybody that's listening is having a safe week. Couple things here. One, the, we're gonna have a bike event for our children primarily. We're gonna be handing out free bike helmets and giveaways for kids on February 28th between 8:00 and 11:00 at Kyrene de la Sierra, and then at Madison Number 1 Middle School, March 7th between 12:00 and 4:00. If you want to get some details on that, please call my office at 602-262-7491. We'll be happy to get you involved in that and get you coming out and enjoying some great Arizona weather. It's one of those things that, it's hard really to have bad weather in Arizona, even when it's 110 outside. It's still not bad compared to what you're seeing back east right now. I was walking around my house yesterday in shorts and a tee-shirt and thinking, wow, my wife's relatives back in Buffalo are all bundled up, and they've got another big snowstorm coming in. So it just tells you how great of a place we live in here. The Pecos Action Group is a group of cyclists, people that, you know, basically bike to work, and they're the, those are those, what I would consider, not the weekend cyclists. These are people that actually use their bicycle or their bike as a commuter. They're in there and they're involved in biking on a regular basis. And we had a tragic accident occur several months back, and they have literally taken the realms. We had about 120 people at one meeting, and now they're coming up with a plan. They're working with our Street Transportation Department. I want to thank our Street Transportation Department for doing such an incredible job of working with them. There you are, Ray. I didn't know you were here, but congratulations for all the work you did on that. Make sure Carrie and others know how grateful I am and how grateful the group is for all the work that you've put into this. It's been a very long process, and Rick Neymar, you were real involved in that, too. And what they're doing now is they're very specific as to one area of town, but they're also gonna be involved in looking at other areas throughout the entire City of Phoenix of making our community a lot safer for people who bike and people who decide to drive their cars. So great work to Brandy Lee Pack and others that are real involved in that, too. From the private side, they put in an incredible amount of work. The Owatuki Chamber, I was fortunate enough to be able to go. Once a year, they have this great event. Every single year, they brought about, they've grown immensely. I remember when they had probably 15 people in a room back in the 90s, and now they've got about 125 active individuals, and they had some great outstanding volunteer work. It just shows you how much people give back in our community, and the amount of work that they do, and the things that they do to help people promote themselves and work through their business, even though we're still in some trying times right now. And speaking of trying times, the City of Phoenix, and this is fair warning to everybody who's watching this right now, so don't be surprised, but the City of Phoenix is about to propose a $30 billion tax increase on you and your families. It's going to be, it's ridiculous. I mean, here it is, we're already facing financial times. People are already struggling through this economy, and the City of Phoenix is gonna be taking $30 billion more out of your pocketbook, because they want to be able to build more trains or do some other transportation services, but that's a $30 billion tax increase, and that doesn't even tell you about all the other priorities we have here in the City of Phoenix. We're already short over 500 police officers, but that didn't make the tax increase agenda. It's only on the trains. So we're going to have a very active debate on that. I'm glad that the Transportation Committee decided to hold back on that proposal and get some more input. I want to thank the members of that committee for holding it back. It gives us an opportunity to be able to get that message out there, that this tax increase is coming, and be prepared, and I think there's gonna be a very active group of individuals wanting to make sure that this thing gets defeated, because it's gonna have a serious impact on our business community and our way of life in the City of Phoenix. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Any other councilors? Councilman Noakowski, some quick follow-up?
Mayor, yeah, follow-up. I'd like our city staff to give me some information. There's a possibility of a, of an initiative on the ballot to hire more police officers. I was just wondering if you can get us some numbers on how much of an increase, if there is, if we keep the quality of life that we have today with all the park services, neighborhood services, libraries and all that, what would be the increase if we would have to add a tax to cover everything that the initiative is asking for? I'd like to have that information to see what additional taxes we would have to do if that was proposed on us, right?
I thank you very much, Councilmember. The only thing I would add is, today's a sad day in Arizona. We lost in Arizona, and where the family of Caleb Mueller announced her passing. She had grown up in northern Arizona and had pursued her dream of helping others over first in Turkey and then in Syria, and just what a tra, what an incredible young life she had, what an incredible life of giving and service, of empathy and caring about others, and we're gonna be hearing a lot about her and her life and the lessons we can learn from Caleb, but all Arizonans should be incredibly proud that a person of her maturity and depth and wisdom and compassion for others grew up in our, in our state. And so I know I speak on behalf of every single member of this council and every single member of this community to say just how grief-stricken we all are to learn about her death that was confirmed by her family today, and just what a lesson she is for all of us. All right, so with that, we'll move on to our regular agenda. I believe we already did consent and executive session, Vice Mayor. The first formal item on our agenda is our Economic Development Funding Plan, and we want to hear more about what our new, not so new anymore, but she's been doing a great job, our Economic Development Director has been doing, and then the needs of the community and the resources that are gonna be necessary if we accomplish our very ambitious economic development goals. Mr. Blue, are you gonna lead the way?
Yes, sir. Mayor and members of the City Council, Paul Blue from the City Manager's Office. I'm here with Chris Mackey, our Community and Economic Development Director, and we're, about a year ago, I was before you describing new tactics and strategies that we recommended to you to employ to further Phoenix's economic future and better position us to compete for the quality jobs that we know we need for the future. We're here for you today to describe where we're at on that journey. Second, what are some numerical goals that we propose to proceed and pursue over the next 18 months? And then last, a new proposal for how we believe economic development can, and economic development projects and programs can be funded going forward. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'd like you to think for a moment about what happens when you invest in Phoenix. You excel in education. You have superior infrastructure that supports your entire community. You drive jobs into the market, lowering your vacancy rate and starting significant new construction, and you really become a powerhouse for locations that the corporate community selects. Today, I'd like to talk to you about our plan to create those jobs and to drive capital investment in this market. In January of 2014, as Mr. Blue talked about, Community and Economic Development came forward with a broad set of strategies on how they were going to move forward in economic development. Promised they'd be back with details, and we're here today to talk to you about those details. You'll remember those broad goals were to help our existing employers grow, attract new employers to Phoenix, support entrepreneurship, encourage redevelopment, and pursue international What do companies really look for when they're looking for a location? They're looking for superior transportation, ways to move their workforce around. They're looking for that workforce. They're looking for the labor force that they need in the market. They're looking for infrastructure. They don't want to have to come in and have to expand water lines and expand streets and move things forward, and they're looking for the real estate that meets their needs. What's the building that fits them? How does, how does that actually fit into their goals? The city needs to be positioned as a fundamental player to be able to be, and make the short list on all these corporate real estate decisions. If the city doesn't represent what companies are looking for at first blush, we won't make that short list. We have a few challenges to resolve. We are one of the more mature cities in some of our submarkets here in Phoenix, so I'd like to talk to you about what those challenges that we face are and great ways that we have to resolve them. First is redevelopment. We are, as I said, a more mature city, so if we look at the areas around the city, but I'll use Washington Street as an example, around our former dog park. It's an area that was once a burgeoning area. Light rail is, has moved through. It's a great transportation corridor, a great community college, but it is in need of some redevelopment. Working with our Planning and Development Department on a master plan that exists, you see a master plan of what Washington Street and that area could look like with beautiful buildings. Kind of imagine a technology park at that location, you know, on the front third, employing lots of people in high-wage jobs. Redevelopment right outside this building. So you saw Patriots Park turn into our beautiful cityscape, employing lots of people, and now getting ready to make a number of job announcements within that building. One of our biggest challenges is land not in private control. It's under agency control. And what do I mean by that is Phoenix has a lot of its land under the State Land Department control. Not a lot we can do about that. There is a process to go through on the State Land Department, and companies go through that process, but we need to be ready with infrastructure. How do we make it easier on them? How do we ensure that they select those sites? And this moves everything from the 85 acres that remains at Loop 202 and 40th Street to great infill site. I have businesses that call on that site on a constant basis that are looking to locate there, but when they find out it's in state land... there, but when they find out it's in state land control, skip right over it. 101 between Mayo and the 51, probably the strongest technology sites that we have that remain in Phoenix. Great corporate campus, great corporate headquarters will be located there one day and it's going to need infrastructure. If we look at our job training, our talent that exists in this market, most of our competition there, when you look at kind of the workforce that exists there, some, when you look at their citizens that have some college, it's well over 70%. When you look at our Phoenix citizens, it's actually 56% of our citizens have some college. So our proposal would be to invest more in job training and more in allowing our citizens the opportunities to get trained for those quality jobs. Our marketing materials, you've all seen our Phoenix is Hot community profile, we're getting a lot of great feedback in the media, from our companies, from our citizens about that, kind of that campaign. And we'll continue to move that piece forward, but not only, we're not just talking about that physical community profile, what we're talking about is our industrial competitiveness. How do we compete in the global market? Where should we be focusing our brand? What would, should we be driving? What do our, what does our competition say about us? And how do we use that to compete against them? And then resources for our entrepreneurs. You know, I know we focus a lot of time in this market on entrepreneurship, which I think is imperative. You look at those success stories that have come out, Microsoft started in a dorm room, Apple started in Steve Jobs garage, appearance garage, and Intel was a little startup of eight guys out of Fairchild Camera that when they came to Chandler all those decades ago was a 12-year-old company that the city chose to invest in that now has 12,000 jobs whose average salary is well over $130,000. So, great opportunities for us here in Phoenix. How do we plan to move that forward and to drive Phoenix as a powerhouse in job creation? We believe the five pillars you see before you, which number one, of course, is job creation. I think we'd all agree that's the most important thing that we have, but everything else you see on those pillars supports that job creation. Important to us, land use planning. How do we create our sites so they're shovel-ready? So they have that capital investment infrastructure? How do we make it so that what we're investing in our market is the infrastructure that makes those sites highly competitive? We don't want to give a company a reason to say no when they see our sites in Phoenix. If we've got 11 sites, we want nine of them to make their short list. And that infrastructure is the single most important thing, that capital investment that we make in that infrastructure, single most important thing that we can do. Redevelopment. We've talked a little bit about that and I think we need to focus on that redevelopment. We look at our, our midtown market. It is a market that had seen some higher-than-normal vacancies. It's a, a market that was built in the 60s and 70s and 80s and has some challenges and issues that we're, we're resolving, then we're starting to see that market really come around again. Entrepreneurship, we've talked about that and how critical that is, not only from the job creation standpoint, but when you're looking at your workforce, workforce chooses to locate where they feel connected to their community, where they really feel they have those opportunities on the entrepreneurship model. And marketing, we've talked about that, so I won't step on that again. You see before you some pretty bold metrics. We believe in economic development with the action plan that we've created, that we are now utilizing day in and day out, and we will update that action plan on an annual basis. So the next time we'll update that will be for the 15, or for the, for the 15, 16 year, is to create 6,000 to 10,000 new jobs in this market, both through new job creation of new companies, but through our amazing companies growing and expanding right here in this market. Our average salary, we intend to move it up a little bit above the average median wage in the county. Right now, we're a bit below the median wage in the county. 500 business outreaches, and I'd actually like to take a moment right now to thank all of you. You're all busy and you spend a lot of time with economic development going out and visiting our companies and they really appreciate it that their elected officials would come out and take a tour and, and visit with you. And each and every one of you have been on innumerable visits with us and I'd really like to thank you for that. 37,000 job seekers assisted. You know, those are the people that we help in our workforce center and our one-stop shops. When, when you see layoffs that happen in other areas of the valley, our team is who steps up along with the county and helps them look for new jobs.
Mayor and council, Mayor and council, Chris and her team have a plan. They're in a position to execute. She has strong goals that when achieved, we believe will actually move the needle in the local community and have an impact on our local economy. But in order to effect this change for the tactics that she describes, we believe strongly and recommend to you the need to invest. And we're not, we're not talking about investing specifically in a private business, rather we would tell you we're investing in infrastructure, training our citizens, providing tools and capacity to our entrepreneurs, and we need to be able to tell the benefits and our success story better to the outside world. Ultimately, we want to pursue a financially sustainable model for economic development that does not require the use of current city resources that are, that are funding current city operations. We want our current successes in growing the economy to pay it forward and support our future aspirations. And we believe we've identified an approach that allows new economic development efforts to pay their own way, allow for increased financial support for current city operations and support the local economy through productive investments in Phoenix and in its citizens. So Chris will kind of carry you into the details about how we propose to do that.
We're here today to present before this body for its consideration, the creation of a strategic economic development fund. That fund would be appropriated by city council annually through its CIP process and would focus predominantly on one-time expenditures. The funding would be based on significant involvement by community and economic development, not drive by economic development. We wouldn't tell you we were there if we weren't. And we would propose revenue sharing on these projects for a period of up to five years. Where would the funds come from? So this would be for new projects, new projects that didn't, that didn't exist today, projects that had no tenants in them today, and projects that are funded, that have been vacant for greater than six months prior to this budget cycle, which we'll talk about in just a moment. We would propose that 50% of the eligible general funds for the new revenue of projects that we bring into the market, fund the community and economic development, strategic community and economic development fund through construction sales tax, utility sales tax, telecommunications sales tax, and commercial lease tax on projects that we bring into the community. Projects for categories of inclusion into the fund would be brand-new construction, somebody that we brought into the market that wouldn't have built here without us, an existing facility that's never been occupied. You think in, in West Valley, we've got hundreds of thousands of, of square feet of warehouses that were built in this, in 2006, '07, '08. They've never had a tenant in them. And existing facilities that have been vacant for six months prior to the current fiscal year, so budget and research had not counted on that revenue in its forecast. Now budget, our budget, the general fund would still get 50% of the eligible funds and the strategic community and economic development fund would also get 50% of that fund. We've listened to you as we've gone around and, and kind of talked to you about this project and where your investment priorities are, and they are in capital infrastructure improvements. We've heard that loud and clear. Land planning and development on the, on the capital investment side, our job training and job creation, and what are our marketing opportunities? We would come back to this council with, so if council chooses to fund this program today, it would not give staff the authority to spend any money. Every item that would come back that we would propose that, listening to council's direction and following its initiative, we would bring back each individual item for city council's approval, approval through the public process and to be voted on individually. Each year, we would come back to council, understanding what your priorities had been the year before and asking you to tell us what your priorities are for the coming year for staff to execute your priorities. Staff is recommending approval of a strategic economic development fund, really focusing on capital investment in this market, really the proposal for the reason, the concept behind this is keeping Phoenix on the cutting edge and not letting it fall behind in the national and global competitiveness market. So with that, I would be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. I'll start with Councilman Gates and then move on to other councilmembers. Other questions, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Mackey, for a great presentation. You've really tackled this issue, which is one that I know, Paul, many of us have raised with you. You know, we sort of look at these different businesses that have been opening or moving to other areas in the valley and we said, how do we get our fair share? And I think this is absolutely the way to do it and most importantly, it's a way to do it that is consistent with the Arizona, with the gift clause of the Arizona constitution and the City North decision. This isn't, you know, giveaways to corporations. This is funding for job training and for infrastructure. So, it's, it's consistent with the law and it's what we need to compete. And for me and a lot of my colleagues up here, redevelopment is a key item and filling these vacant spaces that are around the city. So I appreciate that these funds could be used. And it may be new sites, but then it may be repl, you know, moving something into sites that have been vacant for a significant period of time. So, I appreciate that. And finally, I like that this sets up a sustainable fund that can get us, be separate from the general fund in moving forward to continue to encourage these type of, of projects in the future. So I will be supporting this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. One, I want to just make a couple, one, there's no tax increase on this. I want to make sure that that's clear.
Do the Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, no, no tax increase.
It's just basically a reallocation of the tax that's being collected.
Correct, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure, make sure that gets on the record. The other, and I know you said it, but I just wanted to use real plain English on that language. The other is, one of the things you might want to look at is creating a nexus from the tax dollars that you take that they reinvest in that same area, just something to think about as you move forward. It creates an incentive for people to want to go in that area as well. Like Councilman Gates, I like the idea of getting away from these tax incentives and this is a good way of creating capital projects and putting money, tax dollars into capital projects which the public would like to see. I've been a long proponent of using and creating more capital dollars because that's really where you're going to be looking at the investments that need to come, you know. So that needs to happen. The other is, I want to make sure this is really cleared up too. The monies are going to be used for capital outlays, marketing and job training only. There's nothing else out there, correct?
That's what we're planning to use the fund for. If anything else were to be used, we'd have to come back to, each item would have to come back to council, but we would come back to council based on your instructions and your initiatives. If you brought something forward, we could bring that back for you.
Perfect. And I think that's it. That's all I wanted to make sure got on the record and cleared.
Thank you, Councilman.
You bet.
Thank you very much, Councilman DeCiccio. Please go ahead.
Really quick too, I want to thank you for all the work that you're doing there. I saw the plan you put together. We've been looking for this for some time now in economic development. In the short time that you've been there, you've done a bang-up job. You've saved a couple of projects that kind of wavered over time, so I want to give you a lot of credit. I want to give Ed a lot of credit and Paul for bringing you on board. I mean, it was kind of a surprise that you came on board, didn't even know it was happening, then all of a sudden there you were. And you've got a stellar reputation throughout the entire state, not just in the valley, but in the state. So I think we're very fortunate. It tells us a lot about our management team that was able to bring you on board too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions by members of this council relative to the proposed strategic economic fund? Councilman Okowski.
Mayor, I just want to thank Ms. Mackey for all her hard work and I just want to make it very clear for individuals that there's a lot of property, especially in the downtown area, that hasn't been used for years. And what we're going to be improving is the infrastructure. For let's say something didn't work out in the long run, it still benefits the city of Phoenix, it still benefits the infrastructure, the plumbing and, and all the utilities that we have to get to that building in the future. So it's not throwing money away or wasting money, it's actually investing back into our infrastructure. So I'd like, I'd like to thank you for thinking outside the box and also for really investing in our, in the job training. I mean, that's something that will benefit us no matter what business that the people go into. So I really want to thank you for reaching out, especially in some of our poorer areas where those individuals need some of that workforce training. So, thank you and thank you for everything you're doing and hopefully we start looking like the sixth biggest city in the, in the United States.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Other comments or questions? Councilman Valenzuela?
Thank you. I like these types of investments because they are focused in activity that is specific to Phoenix, infrastructure that will be our own, of course, the training of people who are right here in Phoenix and building a Phoenix ecosystem for entrepreneurship. And I love that entrepreneurship is, is one of the, the pillars, the key pillars of success right here in Phoenix. We've always known that, but to have it highlighted the way that it currently is being highlighted, working directly with the entrepreneur, you know, whether you walk into Gateway Community College, you talk to any of our, our state universities, you go and you speak with the people at SeedSpot and Kahoots or whoever, and they have a relationship with the city of Phoenix. They understand, we understand our role is to support them, find ways to support them and, and something special is, is happening here. And as far as the investments go, it, it is all capital. It's, it's, it's our capital. It's our infrastructure. They are our people, if you will, and, and this is a home run. It's a, it's a, it's definitely, for me, it's a yes vote all the way around. You know, Ms. Mackey, again, I would thank you for all of the, the hard work that you are putting into this. Paul Blue, Mr. Blue, thank you for your leadership. We're in good hands with, with the team that you've developed with CED and, you know, we're really going places. And I just think, you know, not only are we, not only are we doing stuff and communicating with the, the high-wage sector, because we certainly do on, we're doing that, but like I said, if you, you know, if we were to, to bring in a group of people to talk about this plan, think of the many generations you would see in that room as well. And that's, that's pretty special. So, I am in full support.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Lim, did you have anything?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I really support your plan too. And I think I was most encouraged when you met with me and explained this and we talked about doing an inventory and identifying properties and then recognizing what their needs are, working with our other departments to prioritize. I think, you know, whether it's water, we've talked about, they're making improvements in infrastructure, upgrading the streets, you can go right down the line. And I think your leadership is making the difference. You're going to pull it all together that really benefits everybody in this community. So thank you and thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much. Walt Gray, did you have a couple of comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Ms. Mackey came out and talked to the West Side, Mrs. Mackey came out and talked to the West Side Town Hall Steering Committee a few months ago, shortly after she joined the, took her job. And this Thursday, we meet with Cynthia Spell about workforce development. So we're, we're monitoring this and I, I'm disappointed in some things. I see a lot of, a lot of good things in there. Glad you're moving forward on this. Would it raise a question of if we reallocate construction sales tax and the other revenue utility sales, if we reallocate those, what happens with, what, what gets lost? What, you know, what doesn't get funded? And the other thing is the West Side. The West Side is what I'm passionate about, but we have two employment centers on the West Side that weren't mentioned in this, 59th Avenue and I-10, 91st Avenue and I-10. And we have two employment centers. They need infrastructure. The warehouses don't employ a lot of people. We need manufacturing jobs, jobs that employ, uh, health jobs, green jobs, emerging kinds of jobs. We need jobs that employ a lot of people and we need them at the blue-collar level, not the white-collar level. They'll get their jobs. There's, there's, you've got universities and colleges and all those, we got people who have, who don't have the credentials, but have the ability to do work at, at a blue-collar level. Above what, now they're traveling to Chandler and Mesa and Gilbert in the morning. If you get on I-17, you'll see them. And, and they're doing entry-level jobs. And so, these are the best low-hanging fruit. And I think- And I think the mayor's association with Mexico is a, is a great way to, they understand, you know, these, to many degrees, are Mexican-Americans. And the Mexican employers should understand the Mexican worker. And the worker is the same south of the border as he is north of the border. The only difference is the border. So I'll stop there. I know I have just limited time, and so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gray. And just a quick response to that, and maybe Councilman Nowakowski has something, too, is that I get regular reports from our Economic Development Director about who she's recruiting, who the city's recruiting and possible locates. And we spend as much time on West Phoenix, particularly that I-10 West corridor. And I think there's some good stuff that are going to be happening in the very near future that are, that goes exactly to the issue that you just described. Ms. Mackey's working very hard on that issue. Councilman Nowakowski.
That's exactly what I was going to say, Mayor. I've been to many meetings with our economic development staff in attracting businesses. And this is a tool that will help them to actually nail down those, those businesses, corporations to have those in the West Side of town. So we've already seen some success stories out there. And now we're looking at even our friends, like you were saying, in the South to come on down and, and even in Canada to move down to, to the West Side of town. So it, it's not just for central Phoenix, it's also for the whole city.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I think, Walt, you, you brought up a very good point. And that is, when we, if we make the decision, and I certainly be supportive of it, to create a strategic fund for economic development, that's a choice. And, and there will be, there'll be less resources for other things. That's what we do up here, is we have to make difficult choices, particularly as it results in budgetary decisions. But I think you're going to see a very strong statement in this council that strategic economic development, the full range of economic development, from trying to recruit the highest-wage jobs to manufacturing jobs, which are incredibly important to having a, a broad, diverse economy. If we were to vote on this today, and we'll see if there's a motion in just a minute, that's a statement of priorities by this council that the range of economic development is worth investing in. And it's not going to happen by osmosis, it's not going to happen by accident. It's going to take strategic decision-making and strategic investments made by this city. And so that's exactly what this vote would be about. It's about choices and then, I think, making the right choice to invest in the right kind of economic development. Councilman Gates, you have a motion?
I do. Yes, Mayor. I move approval, or I move for the creation of a strategic economic development fund.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Was there anything else we needed in the motion besides that? I'm looking at our city attorney. Is that an okay motion? Okay. Any other final comments by members of this council? Councilwoman Pastor?
I have a question.
Please.
Many of us have these type of properties in our, within our districts. So how would you determine who would receive the investment?
District seven first, right?
Okay, we're going to try to keep district-to-district issues out of today's vote. That'll be for the future. But how are we going to make these choices?
Mayor, members of the council, and Councilwoman Pastor, ultimately, we're going to come back to you with criteria and, and discuss options. But I'm a firm believer in the marketplace will tell us what creates the greatest value, and those people will find us. And this is going to be as much us processing ourselves through with criteria you have given us and making choices along that pathway to make sure that Chris has sites that she can sell in every part of the entire community. And so if we already have 10, 15 sites in one portion of the community, we probably need to figure out, are there investments we need to make in infrastructure in other parts of the community so that we can serve the labor force of the entire city, not just simply one portion of it?
Thank you.
Other questions before we vote on this item? All right, so we have a motion in favor of the staff recommendation to create the strategic economic development funding, economic development fund, excuse me. We have a second. Roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio. Councilwoman Gallego.
Yes.
Councilman Gates.
Yes.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes.
Councilman Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waring.
Oh.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so the item passes on an eight-to-one vote. Congratulations. We can't wait till you come back and talk about the investments we're going to make with the fund. Congratulations. Great. And I also echo the city manager. Ms. Mackey's doing a spectacular job and for all of the city of Phoenix. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is item number three. This is an item relative to the city spending limit, which is something I think that has to potentially go on the ballot for the voters to decide whether or not we want to vote on going beyond the, the funding limit. Who's going to handle this item?
Mayor, members of the council. Mario Panigawa and the Budget and Research Department have staffed a committee that the mayor and council appointed, which was chaired by Mr. Kreider, who was introduced earlier as the CEO of Downtown Phoenix, Inc. But in this case, he was the chairman of the Expenditure Limit Task Force. I'll turn it over to Mr. Panigawa.
Thank you, Ed. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. In just a moment, David, we'll go over the task force process and their recommendation. But first, I just want to give you a quick review of what the spending limit is for the, for the, for the state of Arizona. The Arizona voters established in 1980 a constitutional amendment that applies to local governments. It says a spending limit of 1979, 1980 spending levels applies to cities and towns and counties. That spending limit is adjusted annually for population growth and inflation growth. As you can imagine, this creates issues for cities, counties, and towns throughout the state because there are so many factors that are not accounted for in the strict formulaic limit. The Constitution, however, also has additional provisions in it that recognize that cities may need an alternative to meet the needs for that community. I'll get into the alternatives here in the next slide. But the reason this is so important is because if the city were not able to have an alternative in place, the city of Phoenix would be in 19, or in 20,000, 2016, 17, about a billion dollars over the strict formulaic limit. What that means is that to get under that limit, the city would have to look at cuts to services and a combination of cuts with increases to debt, so taking on more debt. The reason for the debt is because the debt costs that the city has are not included in the expenditure limit. They're exclusions. And so it actually has the effect of encouraging the use of debt if needed to get under the limit. And that would be the case if the city did not have an alternative in place. As I mentioned, the Constitution recognized that the strict formula might not be sufficient for a community's needs and provides additional options. Very quickly, these options include what's called the Home Rule Option or Alternative Expenditure Limit, which is good for four years. Voters must approve the limit and exempts whatever expenditures are identified so that voters of that city set the, the Alternative Expenditure Limit. The second one is a permanent base adjustment, which allows voters to set a new base. Instead of 1979, 1980 spending levels, voters can set a new limit from which population and inflation grow from that limit. The other two items include a capital accumulation, which excludes a specified amount of pay-as-you-go capital expenditures. And the last one is a one-time override, which is really set up for a city to, to account for emergency expenditures or natural disaster if they needed to exceed the limit for one, for one year. In the city of Phoenix, voters have approved the Home Rule Option since 1981. As I mentioned, it's essentially every four years. And here to this, to discuss the process this year for reviewing the Home Rule Option for the city of Phoenix is the Chair of the Expenditure Limit Task Force, David Kreider.
Thank you, Mario. Mayor, members of the city council. First, I would like, we've got to go back one here. First, I would like to acknowledge the citizen volunteers who participated on the task force with me. It was a very strong group of individuals running, representing broad cross-section of the community, including Kerwin Brown with the Greater Phoenix Black Chamber of Commerce, Lizzie Kim, the VP with Fox Restaurant Concepts, Jennifer Malor with the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce, and Armando Roman, who is the managing principal with Axiom Financial Services. Neither the establishment of the task force nor the four public meetings that the task force has are required by state law. So this was an additional way to expose these choices to a group of citizens and to the community. The task force reviewed the history of the Arizona expenditure limitation since its beginning, previous expenditure limits, expenditure and service demands, costs for all major city funds. The task force also reviewed factors impacting the expenditure limit all the way back to 1979 and the other forms of modifying the expenditure limit that Mario just discussed. We also looked at Phoenix's expenditure limit per capita relative to the rate of other Arizona municipalities, which is, which is very low. After the four meetings, the task force is recommending that the Alternative Expenditure Limit be set at the annual budget, the balanced budget that's approved by the city council and be placed on the August 25, 2015 ballot. And again, as Mario had suggested, this is a four-year alternate expenditure set at the city, at the city council-approved budget, would need to be reviewed and approved again by the council after their period of time. So it's a limited period of time. And this was very, very important to the task force in evaluating the robust citizen and community involvement process that the city has used to prepare its budget for many, many years. And incorporating that and continuing to incorporate that extensive community process was an important element in the task force deliberations in terms of adjusting or recommending the alternative spending limit. A couple of reasons why the task force thought that this was extremely important. The Alternative Expenditure Limit, again, set at the city budget, accounts for voter-approved services since 1979, 1980 that are not exempt from the limit. So, you know, voter-approved initiative, or services for police, fire, the Parks Preserve Initiative, and transit would be in jeopardy if we didn't consider the alternative spending limit. Also, the city of Phoenix, over the years, has undertaken responsibility for these extremely important regional assets, and not the least of which is Sky Harbor Airport, that really serve the citizens of the entire region, if not the state, but are covered under the expenditure limit for Phoenix. So the recommendation allows for the continuation of these regional services that support the region, don't impact the city's general fund, but are covered by the limit. And it's just hard to envision a situation it was for the task force to make decisions between supporting Sky Harbor Airport, police, and fire, or issuing additional debt at cost to the city. So I think at the end of the day, the task force was unanimous in its recommendation on recommending the Alternative Expenditure Limit set at the city council-approved budget. And I just want to emphasize four quick reasons for that. It allows for, for local control by local elected officials who are knowledgeable and experienced about the services that are provided to their constituents. It preserves programs and activities that Phoenix voters have supported and have included in the city budget. It's directly relinked to this robust community process that we have during the budget process, and it's limited to four years. So four years from now, if the Alternative Expenditure Limit is approved, the council will have another opportunity to evaluate if it's appropriate moving forward.
Thank you, David. So based on the task force recommendation, the next steps would include public hearings during the month of, month of March and adoption of the ballot proposition. This would be included on the adoption of the form of the ballot for the August 25th Election Day here in the city of Phoenix. Again, I would like to thank Chairman Kreider and all the members of the task force for the time and the energy that they put into this process. It really required a fairly intense schedule of meetings that began right before the holidays and ended just a couple of weeks ago with their final meeting. We are ready to move forward with the steps to place this on the, on the August 25th ballot and seek the council's approval to do that. The action that we're requesting today is to accept the task force report and approve this Home Rule Option with the adopted budget as the spending limit, setting of the hearing dates on March 18th and 25th, and authorizing staff to move forward with placing the Home Rule on the August 25, 2015 ballot. With that, we'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Mario. And Mr. Kreider, thank you for your leadership on the committee that made the recommendation. Councilwoman Williams, do you have a motion to put on table? And then we'll take cards from the audience and discussion among the council.
I do, Mayor. I too want to thank David and, and all the task force members. This is extremely important to the city of Phoenix. So I move that we accept the task force report, approve the Home Rule Option with adopted budget as spending limit, set public hearing dates, March 18th and 25th, and authorize staff to take the steps to place the Home Rule Option on the August 25, 2015 ballot.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. There are a couple of cards here, and then, and then I'll go to the council. First, Roy Miller, looks like he had to leave, but Roy Miller submitted a card in opposition to the proposal. And he put comments in the back of his card. He says that he was involved with the creation of the spending limits back in the late '70s, and he thinks that they were well-crafted and that we should live within them rather than voting every few years to override them. Next speaker is Bill Bennett. Mr. Bennett, would you like to testify testimony on this item?
Not sure if I understand everything here, but it says spending limit recommendations. And I want to ask that you do not allocate any monies, whether it be allocated from grants or any funding whatsoever, to the Central Arizona Shelter Service. Now or in the future, also to the Church of the Street. This money only attributes to the continuous abuse, civil rights violations, human rights violations, and other violations of safety and everything else. So I don't know if that kind of money is into this program that you're discussing.
Okay. I appreciate that very much. And that actually may be more relevant to the next item on the agenda, which is a review of programs. And I think cast funding is one of those items, but we'll take note of your, your thoughts on that item as we go through our budget process. Thank you so very much.
It's just the, the money allocated for these places enable abuse.
Thank you so much. Okay, now I'll turn it over to council. Any questions by members of this council regarding the, the motion, which was to recommend support for staff position that we move, that we put Home Rule on the ballot in August? Members of the council?
Okay.
Councilman, please.
Mayor, I'm going to be voting against this. I think that the better option would be the permanent base option. The state constitution did this for a reason. It wanted to limit spending by government. And what it did is it said, hey, look, it's going to be based on population. Right now, by moving this forward, there is no limitation on growth, none. So Phoenix can spend more than it needs. And it can also, I mean, what the public needs to understand, the city of Phoenix will have more money this year than it ever has in its history. That's what we're projected to have. So I think the permanent base option and then moving forward with spending limitations is the only fiscally responsible thing to do. I wish we would have been able to do that. I don't think that the votes are here. If they are, I'd like to put a motion on the table to do that, to move forward the permanent base option and moving forward with a spending limitation based on growth as an alternative motion.
All right. Okay. No second?
Oh, thanks. I don't think we're going to pass.
Okay. So there was a substitute motion to Councilwoman Williams, a motion for Home Rule, which is staff recommendation, and that was to do a permanent base adjustment and then move forward from, from this time as opposed to Home Rule, which is on those other years. Okay. We have a motion on that. We have, or a substitute motion. We have a second. Are there any comments on that, on that proposal? Okay. I guess I'll do a roll call on the substitute motion.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
No.
Gates.
No.
Noakowski.
No.
Pastor.
No.
Valenzuela.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
No.
Mayor Stanton.
No, so the substitute motion fails seven to two. Now we'll go to the underlying motion. Does any additional comments on the underlying motion for home rule?
Mayor, do we have the locations for the public hearings yet?
Do we have the locations?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, at this point, we are in the process of scheduling those public hearings for 2015. So we will have those very shortly, the dates, times, and locations for all the hearings.
Your suggestion.
Just to clarify, Councilman, were you asking about the two public hearings or the April ones? The two ones you do have scheduled, Mario? These will be at city council formal meetings on Wednesday here in the council chambers. Yes, I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Vice Mayor Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yeah, so that item passes on a seven to two motion. Thank you, Mr. Kreider, again, for your good work and continued good work. And this will be on the ballot in August, it looks like. All right. Next item on the agenda is zero-based budgeting inventory of programs and budget calendar. A few years ago, this council, and Councilwoman Williams in particular, asked that we do a zero-based budget, and we've done that for now three or four years, I guess three years. I think when I became mayor, it was the first year that we did it. It is a substantial document that is available online, and it goes through every program and the allocation of the program. By the way, I think after that first year, we did add on to that a checkbook budgeting as well. So people in the community, if they want to look it up, can look up every single check of any size spent by any department, including the mayor and council, any department in this city to be as fully transparent as possible. So that's what today is, is to present the zero-based budget and then talk about our budgeting calendar for this year. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. So today, we formally begin the process for the 2015-16 budget year preparation. And together, I just want to set some context, because together, we've been planning for this process for almost nine months, beginning with the adoption of labor contracts last year that had a second year of labor concessions that will take effect in 2015-16. Then in September, we made some early revenue forecast adjustments based on current data, so that our planning for the year would be able to accommodate reduced revenue over the original forecast. That was something we had never done before. With your leadership, we did that earlier than we'd ever done it. And then in December, we made early vacancy reductions to accumulate extra savings ahead of the budget process. So that sort of sets the tone here for the advanced work that we've done together, and it's working. As you note in this, personnel costs are down overall for 2015-16 projections as we manage the overall budget picture. Then in two weeks, on February 24th, we will have enough information on expenditures that the Budget and Research Department is working on with departments right now. And also, we will have December sales figures for tax reporting that will allow us enough information to look specifically on February 24th at the year-ahead forecast and a five-year forecast. But today, we're going to just review the basic building blocks of services to the public, which is called our zero-based program budget. And our Budget and Research Director, Mario Panigago, will discuss that document with you, answer any questions, and then we will be asking for the adoption of our budget calendar, which will take us through the 1st of July. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Panigago.
Thank you, Ed. And it's my pleasure to present this to the mayor and council today, the update to this year, this year's zero-based inventory of programs budget document. We update it every year and bring it forward to the council and to the community. It demonstrates an improvement to our budget process and to our transparency of our overall budget overall, as the mayor mentioned. So this really does respond to requests from the mayor and council, who deserve all the credit for leading the way to improve transparency. The document, as you'll see, makes the budget detail more understandable to the public, and it overall helps the city better manage its budget. And Phoenix budget management continues to be touted by rating agencies as strong overall. The mayor and council have been very focused on fiscal accountability, openness and transparency, and engaging residents in the budget process. Other examples include the online hearing with Mayor Stanton. Vice Mayor Waring does additional budget forums with the community. Those are just a few examples of the leadership that the mayor and council show with our budget process overall. For the 29th straight year, the city of Phoenix has received the distinguished budget presentation award, and I brought a little prop with me today to show the plaque from the Government Finance Officers Organization. And just wanted to point out that the Government Finance Officers Organization Association, excuse me, actually has a great deal of confidence in the city of Phoenix, because you can see they've got all these spots for future years where they know we're going to win this award in the future. So I say that tongue-in-cheek. I think this was a smart, cost-saving maneuver by GFOA, but we have all confidence that we're going to continue to receive that award. The other one that the Government Finance Officers Association presents to the city is a financial reporting excellence award, and we've actually received that award for 38 straight years. And that's for the work that's done on the comprehensive annual financial report, and the finance department puts that together and does a great job. With regard to our transparency, one of the most obvious places for transparency for finances and budget is right at phoenix.gov. If you type in phoenix.gov, it takes you right to our homepage. And right in the middle of that page, so this is what the homepage looks like, we'll zoom in on the center of that page, where you can click on links to this week's council meetings or other public meetings, but also right under that is some budget and financial information linked there. There's also, as the mayor pointed out earlier, the city checkbook, which is, takes you directly right to that page. And so if you click on that link, it takes you right to that checkbook there, where you can find out more about city payments to vendors, and you can search by date or by department or by a vendor, and you can see specifically the payments that are made by the city. Also, the other link that you saw up there was to budget and financial information. On our budget homepage, you can see ways that you can learn more about the budget process and how it works, what the steps involved are, what the timing of the process is, how a resident can participate in the budget process, or just go and dig into the reports that are provided to the city council on a regular basis. As we've talked about, our community budget hearings are an extremely important part of the budget process. This last year, we held over 20 budget hearings hosted by council members and the mayor, which is a huge part of gathering input to shape our budget process each year. I'm just going to give you a very brief demonstration of what the online version of the inventory of programs looks like and how it can be used. This is really for our residents. Just real quick, we're going to walk through an example of a department and how the information is useful. One of the ways that, when I think about how we can improve the information that we provide to our residents, is I like to think of my mom, who is actually a resident of Phoenix. She's a resident of District 8, and she was very pleased when Councilwoman Gallego came knocking at her door to come and talk to her about what was going on in the neighborhood and get some insight from her. So when I think of my mom, I think of how she might understand the information that we're presenting. And so a lot of the terms that we use on a regular basis sound very bureaucratic and are not necessarily understandable to the members of the public. And so this document is designed to be more understandable. So in Neighborhood Services Department, for example, in our previous detailed budget book, the book breaks down our Neighborhood Services Department into major divisions like neighborhood coordination, community development. And to most people, most people don't understand what those mean. I mean, they know what the words are, but they don't necessarily know what those terms represent. The inventory of programs, however, as you can see, if we click on, from the Table of Contents page, the Neighborhood Services Department, it'll take us right to their page, and then we can click on the, right at the top of that page, the list of programs in the Neighborhood Services Department. And now you can find the Graffiti Busters Program. Most people know what the Graffiti Busters Program. That's about abating graffiti and cleaning up graffiti. Now we can see what it takes to staff and fund the Graffiti Busters Program. So that's just an example of how useful this document can be and how useful it can be for our residents, in addition to our council and to staff. We typically do receive questions. I've already received questions from council members, from members of our community who've taken a look at the document online and gotten back to us. And it just enables a deeper evaluation of city programs for our budget process. So that concludes the demonstration. Overall, when you, there is a lot of other information in there. The city manager mentioned staffing costs. There are very high-level costs as well as the details. You can get a high-level view of the budget as well as a very detailed granular view. When you look in the document, you can see that for the second straight year, total employee costs are down, while no cuts in services to the community have happened. Over 80% of the programs are in areas like public safety, community services, transportation, very important programs to our community.
What about year-over-year? Can you do that year-over-year for a particular program? Are we at that point yet?
Yes, actually, Mayor, we do show the costs and the staffing levels for year-over-year, so this year compared to the previous year. Yes. I want to thank you, Mayor and council members, again, for your continued focus on fiscal transparencies and seeking ways to engage our residents into the budget process. Requested for action today is your approval of the annual budget calendar. Today, as you can see, we're taking care of the spending limit items and the inventory of programs. We've got some items coming up on February 24th, then the city manager's trial budget on March 24th, community budget hearings in the month of April, after which we'll bring back a revised budget to you, to the council, in May, on May 5th. And May 19th is when the council budget action would occur. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, did you have testimony on this zero-based budgeting inventory of programs and budget calendar?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. As a citizen, you're letting me speak. I'm a resident of Phoenix, and I just appreciate all of your hard work. I don't make it to many of these types of meetings about how ingenuative you have to be to provide our residents with the best services possible, because I know my family and my friends love to use our public swimming pools, our libraries, and these types of things. So it's easy for people to criticize, but it's also another thing to sit up there behind, on the dais, and then go back there and make sure our residents get the benefits that, you know, we should get here in a free society in the 21st century. Thank you so much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Mr. Bennett, did you have additional comments, or were they similar nature to your comments earlier?
I sincerely apologize to each and every one of you for misspeaking on the last thing. Last I knew, when I talked to Human Services in the city of Phoenix, $750,000 was allocated to Central Arizona Shelter Service that year. There's nothing that is coming of that, except continued abuse, safety concerns, and improper spending of money. It was in the print media that it cost $900,000 to operate the overflow shelter, which was only open from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Okay? There was health conditions in there that were inappropriate, that weren't addressed. I tried and tried and tried, and finally, it's going to be shut down. Okay? So I propose that no money goes to Central Arizona Shelter Services, Church of the Street, and everything else. Most of these people need in-hospital treatment. Your first housing first isn't working. I've been to somebody's house who got first housing. He was smoking dope and drinking. He had other people with him. He knew when his case manager was going to be there to inspect, so he cleaned up the place and got it ready for it. That is not working. Okay? Aside from the abuse from the off-duty police officers, the staff members at CAS, and the security at CAS, they need in-hospital treatment. They don't see any hope. They don't see any light at the end of the tunnel because of this continuous daily abuse. Okay? The dream of Mackey wants job training. I'm telling you right now, I was homeless. There's a lot of people there who have a lot of skills and a lot of potential. Okay? You want to train some of those people that are capable, that's the place to go. But they're getting beaten down every day. And it's the money that you guys allocate for these programs that enable them to continue to do it, because the staff aren't properly trained to handle those situations. They're people, just friends, family, or whatever, hired off the street, go do this, and they're abusive.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bennett, for taking the time to come down. Now I'll turn to members of the council. Any comments or questions regarding the zero-based budgeting inventory of programs? Councilman Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. So question for Mr. Panigago. Is it, the inventory is on, folks can go on the website right now, and it's part of the agenda, part of the materials for this meeting, but will this remain on the website for people to access? And if so, where exactly can they go for that?
Mayor, Councilman Gates, thank you. Yes, this report, this whole inventory document will remain online, available for the public to access anytime. By going to that phoenix.gov page, there's that link right in the middle of the page for budget and financial information, and from there, you can access all of the reports that we provide, including this inventory of programs.
And is that something we can put on our individual, we're talking about some of our individual websites earlier, we could put this on our individual website as well?
Absolutely. Great idea.
That's great. I'd like to do that, because I think this is wonderful for folks who really, you know, who want to see what we spend money on as a city. These are discreet items that people can really get into, see what we're spending, and then see what's proposed for the upcoming year. I think that that's great. And again, as the mayor mentioned, we've been doing this for several years, thanks to the pushing and the suggestion of Councilwoman Williams, Councilman DeCiccio, and others. I think it's a great addition. One thing I noticed, thought the vice mayor might be pretty excited about it, on page 272, the golf budget goes from 8.9 million to 6.2 million. Now, again, that's just preliminary, but, I mean, these are the things that, these are the types of things that people will see if they look in this inventory. But one thing I would like to ask about is on page 26. Page 26, there's a discussion of this item, sworn accrued leave payout. And this number for, in the 14-15 adopted budget, is 6 million, and the 15-16 preliminary budget estimate goes up 92% to 11.6 million. So I think this is something that might catch people's attention, and I wonder if you could address why we're seeing almost a doubling in that particular item.
Mayor, Councilman Gates, that's a great question. Thank you. The sworn accrued leave payout has to do with, and actually, it was part of the actions taken last year related to the ending of pension spiking overall. And so the actions by the council to end pension spiking included the way that leave was being paid out to sworn officers and firefighters, which was done on a regular basis, and instead will be paid out in lump sums for leave and for vacation and sick leave. What we see is a, what we believe is a temporary increase, so this first year, those costs will go up. It offsets some other costs related to retirement costs. And within a couple of years, we believe that this will even out, because it's based on the use of those leave banks.
Thank you. And I just want to encourage all the viewers, we will be listing on our website and on social media when the budget hearings will be held in District 3. We'll be doing some joint hearings with some of my colleagues here, but just want to encourage people to come out, stay tuned, and attend those hearings. It's always It's always a great opportunity for people to learn more about how we spend the taxpayers' dollars. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gates. Other members of the council? Councilwoman Williams, please.
Mario, I'm just checking on where you have the programs listed and the positions. Are those allocated positions or filled positions?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, those are the authorized positions, so not all of those are filled. It includes some vacant positions.
Thank you very much. Any other additional comments by members of this council relative to this item? We have, I guess we need...
Mayor, I'd make the motion to adopt the 2015 budget calendar and move this forward.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio. Councilwoman Gallego.
Yes.
Councilman Gates.
Yes.
Councilman Noakowski. Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes.
Councilman Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waring. Councilwoman Stanton, Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
The councilman, those were the good old days for me, Mr. City Manager. Yes, on that, so that passes unanimously. At the beginning of the meeting, we got started late. The vice mayor and I conferred. Because of the lengthy item, we thought this was going to last a lot longer, and told our intergovernmental team to go back to work, because there weren't any particularly hot issues, I think, on the agenda, so there'd be no other further items on today's agenda. This meeting is adjourned.